The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
I'll give you an evening everyone and welcome to the regular meeting of the Weyburn City Council held here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, July 15, 2024. Been wonderfully warm days out. So, starting here tonight, want to get the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held June 24, 2024. Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I move that the minutes of the regular council meeting and the strategic planning and priorities committee meeting held June 24, 2024 be accepted as presented.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Additions to the agenda? Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. There's no additions tonight from administration.
Counsel? Seeing none, moving forward. There's no public hearings and notices, delegations and proclamations, additions, there is none, reports of standing committees, there is none. We have the consent agenda. We have reports coming in from Public Works Report from June, Water Treatment Plant Report from June, the Planning and Development Report from June, and Planning and Development 2023 Report. These can be all seen on our city Weyburn website. Do you have a motion to receive?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the following items on the consent agenda be approved. Public Works Report, June, Water Treatment Plant Report, June, Planning and Development Plan Report, June, Planning and Development 2023 Report.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Counts payable, do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that the purchases from June 1, 2024 to June 30, 2024 in the amount of $2,656,581.64 be approved for payment. Purchases include quick pays of $93,218.80, counts payable $1.1917,276.31, direct withdrawals of $638,790.99, and debit card transactions of $7,295.58.
Your worship, I'll second that.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. The next item in the motions section is 2024 Traffic Signal Replacement, the RFP. Jennifer, if you would, please.
Yes, good evening. This is for the 2024 traffic signal installation at 16th Street and First Avenue. So, the intersection of 16th Street and First Avenue was currently controlled by a four-way stop. Based on the results of a recent traffic study, it was determined that traffic signal lights would be more effective at improving the level of service compared to retaining the four-way stop. It was also determined that the previous pavement was experiencing significant redding related to the continuous starting and stopping of traffic. Traffic signal lights equipped with camera detection will significantly reduce this pavement shoving and preserve the investment of the 2023 pavement upgrades. The budget for the 2024 traffic light replacement projects is $350,000 and includes the installation of new city-supplied infrastructure associated with the traffic signal lights at two locations. The first location at Government Road and First Avenue intersection was awarded in April and construction has since been started for a total cost of $299,000. On March 21, 2024, an RFP was posted on the city's online bidding portal bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Weyburn by April 9 at 4:00 PM. Total of three proposals were received, and you can see the bids are summarized below and include PST. Proposal submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope or work involved had similar project experience, the required qualifications, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. All the proposals met the full requirements with Can Traffic Services Limited holding the lowest bid. The Engineering Department applied for funding from the SGI Provincial Traffic Safety Fund for the maximum allowable funded limited of $100,000 for 16th Street and First Avenue traffic signal installation. On July 4, 2024, SGI announced that the city of Weyburn was granted the full funding amount of $100,000 for the project, and so SGI administers this fund for the government of Saskatchewan. There is approximately $51,000 left in the 2024 traffic light replacement budget after allocation of the construction costs for Location 1. The city is purchasing and supplying the infrastructure for Location 2 for approximately $70,000, which makes the total project cost of $253,476.46. It is recommended that the traffic signal replacement at Location 2, 16th Street and First Avenue intersection be awarded to Can Traffic Services Limited for $183,476.46, including PST. An overage of $102,500 is required and is recommended to come out of the Public Works budget. The Storm Wastewater System Upgrades Project for $855,000 was based on receiving federal funding. This funding was not reserved, and this project has been canceled for this year. This could cover the overage.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. I would make a motion that traffic signal replacement at the intersection of 16th Street and First Avenue be awarded to Can Traffic Services Limited for $183,476.46, including PST, and that the overage of $102,500 come from the Public Works budget.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion, please.
Thanks, your worship. I think I know the answer, Jen, but just to be sure. So, this is the intersection we just rebuilt last year, fresh pavement there. Now, the change from a four-way stop to a set of stoplights would all be bored in, or if that's the right terminology, we're not tearing up new pavement to put this in, correct?
We are definitely not tearing up our new pavement, and it would all be bored.
Yeah, very good. And so, not very minimal disruption as well, I would suspect.
Exactly.
Because I know there's some consternation right now on that road, although it's all good news, but minimal interruptions. Thank you.
Next?
This is just more of a comment. Kudos to administration and to your team for keeping up and pressuring. I know we've had conversations several times over this money, and good for you, good work.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, Jennifer, just in terms of planning this out for future projects like this, if ever correctly, the other one, the bids came in higher than expected as well, do we attribute that to inflation, or is this just supply and demand this year?
Previously, we did have local contractors that would bid on this. They are no longer doing this type of work for the city, so that we don't have that advantage. As well as Can Traffic is... Traffic lights are a specialty, and we've learned a lot more over the past year about the requirements of what it is for installation of traffic lights, and so these guys are actually specialized in it. Estevan uses them as well as other neighboring communities, so they are actually specialized and qualified to do this kind of thing to reduce liability on the city.
That sounds excellent. Thank you.
See no more, any more questions? Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. The next one, Downtown Revitalization Conceptual Plan, RFP.
Thank you. The Engineering Department has budgeted $150,000 for Downtown Revitalization Conceptual Plan under the 2024 General Operating Fund in the engineering budget. The Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Board have committed to contributing 25% each towards the total project cost. The city of Weyburn is looking to revitalize the downtown core to increase economic activity and improve the vitality of the area. Key intended outcomes of the project are to increase pedestrian traffic through the downtown, increase gathering and socialization opportunities, increase occupancy rates for commercial properties, enhance aesthetics overall, and enhance public spaces. This requires a comprehensive assessment of the downtown core to develop design concepts for enhancements and improvements. The keys to this project are to revitalize the downtown area through comprehensive public consultation. The improvements would be focused on the area within the boundaries of Cotto Avenue North Boundary. 4th Street would be the East Boundary with Railway Avenue the South Boundary and 2nd Street the West Boundary. And there is a map attached that kind of outlines the area that we are looking to focus on. So, on May 27, the request for proposal was posted on the city's online bidding portal bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, on the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Weyburn by June 24 at 1:00 PM, and a total of four proposals were received. The bids are summarized below and include taxes. Proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope or work involved, had similar project experience, the required qualifications, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met, and all of the proposals met the requirements. It is recommended that the 2024 Downtown Revitalization Conceptual Plan be awarded to Crosby, Hannah &amp; Associates for $70,908.78, including taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the 2024 Downtown Revitalization Conceptual Plan be awarded to Crosby, Hannah &amp; Associates for $70,908.78, including taxes.
Your worship, I would second that motion.
Discussion, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Jen, have we worked with Crosby, Hannah &amp; Associates before? They seem familiar for me or to me.
Yeah, they are actually doing the concept plan for Hague School Area. So, I spoke with the Director of Leisure Services, and he has been very happy with their work. Their proposal is... What they are providing is matching their proposal, so we have no concerns with using them. Excellent.
No?
Thanks, Jen. I think this is a great idea, and I just want to encourage the citizens of Weyburn that when we have these consultations, that they show up to these meetings. Because I know another community that had meetings and nobody showed up, and then they complained when the decisions were made. So, I think everybody get out to these meetings and voice your opinions and thoughts. It's very valuable, and it's too late after the fact.
Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. A couple of comments. First off, I would also like congratulations on getting this one under budget. So, you know, sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down. Also, though, for getting the chamber and the ECH Dev Group engaged in this to go partners equal with us on this, I think that's important so that there's some other eyes on the project, I suppose. I could phrase it that way. So, I think that's very exciting. My question is simply just around when and what are we expecting? So, what's the timeline look like for Crosby and Hannah to return something to us? And then, what does that end product, product look like? What will we have when we're done?
So, we have proposed... We've set a deadline, has to be done by year-end, the report, the consultation, everything kind of put together. End product is kind of... In the process, there is large business consultation, public consultation, and then the end product will be around... There will be a piece for infrastructure, which will be related more to my department in the sense of, we will look at undergrounds, we'll look at the roads, the streets, different things like that. The Leisure Department will be heavily involved because we do have a lot of park infrastructure within the downtown. How does that affect trees, flower beds, all those different things that they maintain within the downtown? And then, I know there has been discussion, and this has been brought up, is looking at, you know, walkability, how the traffic flows through there, different things like that. And then, a lot of the aesthetic appeal to anything that would be city-related infrastructure, or like city-related property. And so, ultimately, they, through all the consultations and everything, they will kind of give us a conceptual plan of what we would work towards, and obviously, it'll be a multi-year staged program of what we would be replacing, improving, and changing through the downtown.
So, this is much more, and I know this, but this is much more than just an aesthetics piece, and this is much more than a try to get more new businesses. It's much, much more than that. It's about flow, it's about longevity, it's about the entire concept of that area of the city beyond looks.
Yeah, and that obviously involves our Planning and Development Department and the Building Department. There's going to be a lot of city departments, but as well as, you know, we want to engage the downtown businesses, the, you know, the public that is visiting downtown, what can draw you to it, and different things.
So, I would just reiterate then what Counselor Bemet you said, encourage folks to take part in this process.
Further discussion? Seeing none? Oh, just against the one thing. So, with 25 coming from the chamber, 25 from the ECH Dev, so this really in essence is only going to cost the city roughly $35,000?
Well, that's the max they're going to contribute. It's... They will contribute 50% of the overall project cost, so yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's why I'm saying 25, 25, and which is 50%, so we pay... So, roughly this, on this one here, we'll only be paying 35. Okay. Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. The Albert Douglas Dam Stop Log Upgrade. And for those who do not know who the Albert Douglas Dam is, this is our dam that we have that stops and is built to make sure that Nickel Lake exists. And that was built by the PFRA in what year? Here's trivia, what year, Jennifer?
A long time ago.
78, or something like that? Yeah, a long time ago. And then turned over to us. Okay, go ahead.
The city of Weyburn has retained MPE Engineering Limited to complete an inspection review of the stop logs currently utilized in the spillway structure located on the southeast end of Nickel Lake on the Albert Douglas Dam. It is believed that the existing stop logs are under design due to visible failures. The purpose of the inspection was to confirm physical dimensions, assess the condition of the stop logs, review design issues with the existing system, and gain insight on additional issues from operations staff. A site inspection was completed on July 31, 2023 with representatives from MPE and the city present. Following the Engineering Department's review of MPE's inspection report and recommendations, MPE was obtained to proceed with the detailed design of a new steel stop log system upgrade consisting of the following main project components. New steel stop logs for each spillway bay, new steel stop logs following beam/lifter, new electric hoist system, review of existing structural steel monorail system, repainting, rehabilitation of existing monorail system. There is a $500,000 budgeted under the Utility Operating Fund for the stop log upgrade. On May 29, a request for proposal was posted on the city's online bidding portal bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Weyburn by July 2 at 2:00 PM. A total of five proposals were received, and the bids are summarized below and include PST, so you can see the five there. All bid submissions were reviewed by the city and MPE to ensure bidders submitted all response requirements, including a bid bond and consent of surety documents. MPE completed a bid evaluation is of the professional opinion that the low bidder has the capability to perform the work required. Therefore, they would recommend the acceptance of the low bid submitted by DMS Industrial Constructors Incorporated. It is recommended that the Albert Douglas Dam Stop Log Upgrade be awarded to DMS Industrial Constructors, Inc. for $552,089.5, including PST. An overage of $52,089.5 is required and is recommended to come out of the Utilities Fund Water Treatment Plant Budget. The water treatment plant upgrades for the PAC system is currently being reviewed due to higher-than-expected bid prices, and will receive a scope reduction allowing room in this budget, and that can cover the overage.
Go ahead, Warren.
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the Albert Douglas Dam Stop Log Upgrade be awarded to DMS Industrial Contractors, Inc. for $552,089.5, including PST, and the overage of $52,089.5 come out of the Utilities Fund Water Treatment Plant Budget.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Thank you, worship. Jen, did MPE indicate any sort of long-term planning as well for future maintenance? And because we don't want to have to run into, oh my gosh, this needs to be replaced again in so many years.
The stop logs have never been replaced over the course of this, so this isn't surprising. They've kind of met their life cycle as it would with anything. We do with this one, with the new stop log design, it will also be a lot safer for our workers to remove them because we do have to open our dam or adjust it if we have more water. So, this will make it a lot safer, but they're also building an operation and maintenance manual as part of work we awarded last year. So, that will be along with this. There will be a full operation and maintenance manual for the dam.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you, worship. Could you describe to us what the stop log is for those of us who are not engineers that are watching and listening? Kind of a low-level understanding of what it actually does and is.
So, they're almost like, their logs in there, and you can move them to open gates, like we have kind of gates with the dam. And so, basically, this allows the dam to kind of be raised, you can overflow it, like you can kind of adjust the logs, basically. They look like kind of a log. I don't have any pictures to show you, it would be easier to show you that way, but basically, they're allowed to basically adjust if Nickel Lake really starts to overflow, and we will release water over the dam. So, they just adjust within there, if that helps.
That does help. Thank you very much. And I've been surprised at the variance in bids before, but I was gobsmacked at this one. To see a difference of $500,000 to $12 million was unbelievable.
Yeah, and it was kind of, they took a unit price per stop log and just multiplied, and we double-checked that it's not a typo. That is the bid, so.
Wow. Thank you.
So, the question is, and that's where going, where do we have such a wide range? And even on the last bid, the one there before that we talked about for the downtown revitalization, it was a large... So, the question bears to ask, and you can kind of answer it and give us assurance on this one. Where we... Are we writing the RFPs properly to get to know what we're wanting there? So, these people aren't giving some far-out bids because they say they're not understanding. And the second thing, this, especially when this $12 million being the high end and $500,000 on the low end, are these 500, is that just a Band-Aid? Or is the $12 million one, are they saying this is actually what we need?
So, with the RFP like this, this one would have been pretty detailed on the requirements of what it was actually needed. When you go for ones like concept plans, those ones are left a little broader. They're left broader for a reason because you don't want to write it so specific that you are kind of dictating the plan that will go forward, especially on a concept plan for like, say, a downtown. Because we, as administration, don't want to be saying, okay, you're going to do this, this, and this, and then it doesn't fit with the public one. So, we wanted a broader one on that one. So, that one, in the sense, we are broader on some of those, and that's because we are trying not to railroad that engineering firm or those firms into the plan being predetermined. For ones like this, it comes down to a lot of things. We see contractors, if they can get the price that they put out, then they will do it, but their schedule might be tight, they might be tied to a lot of other projects, and it depends, you know, what kind, where they're pulling their stuff from, you know? If this is a specialized staff coming out of B.C., I can't say where contact is because contact actually bids on a lot of our stuff, and they can be low bidder on some of it, so this one's a little surprising. But with them, you know, if they're pulling a specialized crew out of B.C. that's doing dams there, then it can be more expensive. It depends what kind of equipment they have to be versus some of these other contractors might have more localized area, or they might rent the equipment here or different things. So, I can't dictate exactly what kind of overhead, where they pull their crews, everything like that. This one was a pretty detailed RFP, so... And we looked at DMS Industrial, and they're completely qualified, they have the experience, and they've been reviewed, so they're saying they can do it for that.
Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
What's the timeline behind it? Or I guess, secondarily to that, is there a concern of a timeline behind it?
There is a bid bond and surety on this, so that if they were to drop the job or something else, we could go after that. With a lot of water projects, we tend to do them in the fall because we have less water demand and different things, and we can run into less issues. On some of these construction projects, we are a little broader with our timelines to get better pricing. Where, you know, with the stop logs, they could come in and do some of them, and then if we hit winter and they can't meet that timeline, we can bring them back in the spring. But this one would, I believe, expect to be finished this year, so it would be like a full timeframe.
Okay, but not a concern to the residents if it didn't get completed this year? It's not in a dire, you know...
Our stop logs aren't going to completely...
Okay, thank you.
Knock on wood. I'm not going to say no catastrophe is allowed happening because that's Murphy's Law. But no, there isn't, this isn't something that if, you know, it didn't get done tomorrow, we're not in dire straits, but we need to do it.
So, you know, further questions? Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. New business, Charlie, you have home-based business permit, Rick Smith Crescent.
An application has been received from Robin Vilku to operate a personal-service home-based business out of their residence at 732 Rick Smith Crescent, legally described as Lot 44, Block 15, Plan 68R13707, located in the R1 Zone. The owner of the premises has provided written permission for the applicant to operate a business at this address. This will be classified as a controversial use, and the business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. The proposed hours of operation are Monday to Saturday from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The applicant anticipates minimal traffic increase with one vehicle per appointment, and driveway parking is also available. The zoning bylaw requires that controversial home businesses, which involves clients attending to the home, go through the neighborhood notice process and receive council approval. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on June 18, 2024 to all neighbors within 50 meters of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application, and no comments or concerns were received. Home-based businesses are a permitted use, meaning that landowners do have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based businesses generally must meet the following provisions. Be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence. Be compatible with residential use. Be limited in extent in terms of volume and materials sold and number of clients. Not substantially increase the volume of traffic and not detract from the residential character of the zone. The use identified would be considered controversial occupation under Section 5.1.19 of the zoning bylaw. As clients will be directed to the home, staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets the requirements in the zoning bylaw, therefore are recommending Option 1 to council.
Mr. Jenke?
Your worship, I am pleased to move that council approves the home-based business permit 2024.010 for Robin Vilku at 732 Rick Smith Crescent, subject to the conditions as stated.
I'll second that, your worship.
Charlie, did you read the recommendations?
No, I did not.
Okay, go ahead. Do the recommendation. I don't know. And you didn't correct me.
Okay. Option 1, council approves home-based business permit 2024.010 at 732 Rick Smith Crescent, subject to the following conditions. No person other than a resident of the dwelling shall be engaged in the home-based business as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which a home-based business occurs may be placed in any media. The home-based business shall not occupy more than 25% of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit. The face of any home-based business sign on-site must not exceed 0.092 meters square and must be placed within the inside hall, inside half of the front yard setback. This permit is only valid for the above address and is non-transferable to another address. Reapplication will be required if the business moves locations. Home-based businesses are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. Applicants' driveways shall be used for off-street parking of clients, and the city of Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home-based business. Option 2, refusal of the home-based business permit 2024.010 at 732 Rick Smith Crescent for the following reasons. A permitted use must have a reason for refusal. Staff recommendations. Option 1, council approves home-based... Staff recommendations, option one, council approves home-based business 2024.010 at 732 Rick Smith Crescent, subject to the conditions listed above.
And that's what you wanted in your?
Yes, your worship, those are the stated conditions to which I was referring.
That's what I thought. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Number two, home-based business permit for, on 231 Fifth Street, Charlie.
An application has been received from Emmett Aronson to operate a personal service home-based business, mountain top counseling service outside of their residence at 231 Fifth Street, legally described as Lot 13, Block 23, Plan 99SE36354, located in the R2 Zone. The owner of the premise, premises has provided written permission for the applicant to operate a business at this address. This will be considered a controversial use as this business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. The proposed hours of operation are Monday to Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The applicant anticipates minimal traffic increase with one vehicle per appointment and driveway parking available. The zoning bylaw requires that controversial home-based businesses, which involves clients attending the home, go through the neighborhood notice process and receive council approval. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on July 2nd, 2024, to all neighbors within a 50-meter radius of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application, and no concerns or objections were received. The home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning the landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based businesses generally must meet the following provisions. Be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence. Be compatible with residential uses. Be limited in extent in terms of volumes of materials sold and number of clients. Not substantially increase the number of, increase the volume of traffic. Not detract from the residential character of the zone. The use identified would be considered a controversial occupation under Section 5.1.19 of the zoning bylaw, as clients will be directed to the home. Staff have received the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets the requirements in the zoning bylaw, therefore are recommending option one to council. So, option one, council approves home-based business permit 2024.011 at 231 Fifth Street Northeast, subject to the following conditions. No person other than a resident of the dwelling shall be engaged in the home-based business as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which a home-based business occurs may be placed in any media. The home-based business shall not occupy more than 25% of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit. The face of any home-based business sign and on, sorry, the face of any home-based business sign on site must not exceed 0.092 meters square and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. The permit is only valid for the above address and is non-transferable to another address. Reapplication will be required if the business moves locations. Home-based businesses are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. Applicants' driveways shall be used for off-street parking of clients, and the City of Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home-based business. Option two, refusal of the home-based business permit 2024.011 at 231 Fifth Street Northeast for the following reasons. A permitted use must have a reason for refusal. Staff recommendations, option one, council approves home-based business permit 2024.011 at 231 Fifth Street Northeast, subject to the conditions listed above.
Go ahead, move, please.
Your worship, I'll make the motion that council approved the home-based business permit 2024.011 for Emmett Aronson at 231 Fifth Street Northeast, subject to the conditions presented by Development Officer Malcolm.
Worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion? Just again, I'd like to say that this is very good, that we've got so many businesses. We've had so many businesses come forward and doing, being out of home base, and it's always good to see entrepreneurship going forward. Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Nicole, if you would, please. We're, we're discussing, this is council remuneration, and we're talking about this for the next council's coming up.
Right.
You can go forward.
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, turn it on. There you go.
Okay. So as part of the strategic objectives under fiscal responsibility, I was tasked to complete a remuneration review of current council and mayor salaries, as well as the process to determine salaries. So back in 2014, MNP had been engaged to conduct a remuneration review and provide recommendations for council. And a policy was developed, and within that policy, the remuneration was supposed to be looked at five years from then, which would have been 2019. However, no review has been done since 2014. So what we did was we sent out invitations to survey to nine similar municipalities, and between June and December of 2023, those nine municipalities participated in the survey. Our former city clerk also completed the survey in order to compare results with the nine municipalities. And in reviewing the data, we did not include the City of Weyburn data in the average or median analysis of data. We also looked at per diem amounts, including council meeting attendance and community events, expense reimbursement, and the approved practice for salary increases for elected officials within this report.